All right, welcome everybody. Tonight, today is January 7th. Welcome to the first council meeting of the new year. Hope everybody's holidays were great. We are going to start off with the invocation, which I will do, followed by the pledge of allegiance. So if you could please join me. Dear Lord, I was reminded today on my way to this meeting that this month's pace character trade of the month is fairness. And I ask that you instill in everybody in this room and in our community, a sense of fairness, kindness, humility and grace. And these are the things that need to guide us in our everyday treatment of each other and how we deal with each other. Knowing that you never know what somebody is going through. You never know what has is coming in their future. So please allow us to to keep these four words in mind tonight as we conduct the city business. Amen.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And then we will get going with the roll call. Councilmember Van Orman here. Councilmember Ball here. Mayor Pro Tim Cargill.
Present.
Councilmember Spencer.
Present.
Councilmember Dunn.
Happy to be here.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Here.
And I know Councilmember Kurtz is traveling. Can I have a motion to excuse her?
Motion to excuse Councilmember Kurtz.
Second.
Okay, we have multiple seconds. I think I heard Councilmember Spencer first. All in favor of excusing Councilmember Kurtz, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. So we are now moving on to agenda approval. Do we have any, any suggested changes? Mayor Pro Tim.
Mayor, I have two amendments that I'd like to make to the agenda. I'll do them separately. The first one is a motion to remove item 11D from the agenda this evening.
Do we have a second? Seconded. Okay, we have a motion of second to remove item D discussion.
So while I appreciate the fact that technically this is allowed, I think it's a violation of our rules of reconsideration. The council voted on this issue on December 3rd. We also were asked on December 17th to reconsider the appointment, at which time no council member said they would be willing to do. So again, while I know technically this is allowed to be put on the agenda, I think the council has already voted on this several times. And it is not needed. So those are my comments.
Any other comments? Councilmember Ball.
We haven't voted on this several times and the vote that we did take was blindingly fast and there wasn't enough time for discussion. So I don't think, I think that's irrelevant. I think we do need to proceed with D.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Dunn.
I think this should be included in the agenda. I'm speaking against the motion. Specifically, the merits of this, I think, are appropriate at that time in the agenda. I don't think we need to break into the merits of including this at this time.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, before I take a vote, I will say that A, it is not the same topic because trustee member Schmitz, Schmitz Gerard, I'm looking at the wrong person. I'm looking at you and saying, well, Kim Gerard's term has lapsed. We have a new application, so this would be a new appointment. And in the essence of fairness, I believe that she deserves the same fairness and respect that our other candidates had at the last meeting to introduce themselves and tell a little bit about themselves and have the council ask questions. So this is, this is the reason that I have put it back on the agenda. Councilmember Ball.
Yeah, I'd also like to add that we probably got 10, at least 10 letters of support for her today, including one from today and the last couple of days. One from her husband that was very very precise about all of her training and education. And it almost brought me to tears. It was amazing.
Okay, any other comments?
Just a point of clarification. So, so did you interview her the second time?
No.
Okay.
No need. I know her work. It's proven. Okay, any other comments? All right, not hearing any, all those in favor of removing 11D from the agenda, please say aye. Those opposed? All right. So vote is tied, so the motion fails. We will leave 11D on the agenda.
Okay, and Mayor, the second motion I'd like to make is to move item 19B into 9A as a workshop discussion.
I will let city administrator rank away and
We need a second first.
Oh yeah, sorry. Yeah, do we have a second for the motion?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay. I'll let these two weigh in on that, the reason why it's executive session.
So I'll, I'll start and I'll let Sean fill in some details. The, the reason it's an executive session is because we will be discussing confidential information that isn't appropriate to have in a public forum. And I'll turn it over to Sean for any additional comments that he may have.
I, I don't have anything specific to say. I mean, I spoke with Mark with regard to the topic and the information that's going to be discussed. And the intent is to have that discussion with council relative to the information. There's going to be decision making. It's just discussions relative to informing the council. And if they had any particular questions with regard to the information. This isn't a decision making with regard to the topic. It's more about the confidential information that will be provided to the council.
Okay, any other questions? All right, those in favor of moving 19B to 9A, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion fails for two to four. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, one more motion then to move executive session item 19B to what would be, I guess, 8 F and then add a workshop discussion afterwards. And I can explain my reasoning.
Do we have a, we have a motion and a second.
So what? Yes, so it would be to move 19B to the, basically the beginning of nine and then add a workshop discussion after nine. And then the, the, I think.
Oh, we had a.
Councilmembers. And the reason for this is what I'm trying to do is make sure that the council has the opportunity, if something comes up in the executive session, to vote on that or to bring it to the public after our executive session is over. So that is my primary concern about this, as opposed to pushing it off again, which we've done several times to try to get it out into the public or at least as much as we can out to the public and be able to make a decision if we decide we would like to do so. Doesn't require us to do so. We could skip right on past it in the agenda, but it is just a way for us to have a mechanism to do so.
I'll, I'll jump in just a sec. I just want to ask, see if there's any questions or other comments from the council for.
I just want a point of order. Public notice did not include this on the agenda, and I think it's unfair to those who are not aware that it would be included.
Well, that good point. Mark, can you, I don't want to break any rules. Can you elaborate on our topic or can I?
So sure, the, the topic in 19 is to give council the opportunity to review financial statements. And that's confidential information. And so we don't want to have financials presented in a public forum when it's confidential information. And so that's the purpose of the.
The business financials, not the financials as it relates to the city.
Correct.
If that helps. Okay.
I think everyone knows what we're talking about.
I just wanted to make sure.
But I, what I'm trying to do is make it so that, not necessarily that we come back from the executive session to share those things, but that if we leave the executive session and we want to take some sort of action.
Sure.
We can, we have the ability to do that.
Yeah, and that's the council's prerogative to set that agenda.
Just a point of clarification. I believe the council rules just involve resolutions and ordinances that, that need to be noticed. I could be wrong, but I believe that's.
Counsel can make revisions to their agenda. I think this particular motion is to move one section to an earlier section. And then if they want to discuss it afterwards, they're more than free to do so.
All right, any other questions? Councilmember Ball.
Well, this assumption that we all know what we're talking about. I mean, how do we, I mean, it's an executive session. So as far as I know, I don't know exactly what it is, so I.
Well, I just said we're, we're, we're going to be reviewing the financial information from each of the restaurants.
Right, I understand, but I mean, that's, that statement was kind of misleading that we all know what we're talking about, so.
We need to keep the personal.
Like it is.
Out of the meeting, everybody, please. Okay, Sean, any?
No, I think, I think it's just a question of moving it, an agenda item. That's what we should focus.
And I think we should also, we don't, we don't know how long this will last, which is probably, which is, is the, one of the reasons we put executive sessions at the end, so we don't have our public sitting here waiting for us 10 minutes, then 15, then 20. So if you can please take that into consideration. But there's no other comments. I'll go ahead and take a vote. Those in favor of moving 19B to A8E and 9A, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I can put your hands up, I make sure I got it. Okay, we have four. Favor, those opposed?
No.
All right, so motion passes, so we will be moving 19B to 4F. Sorry, gosh, 8F. And possibly 9A. Okay, any other motions for amendments?
Yeah. Let's see. Item B, 10B. Yeah, I'd like to move that into the.
Sorry, you move at request, making a motion to move 10, which 10B.
10B to be, 10B. It would be again.
11E.
11. Yeah.
E. Okay. All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Dunn, second. Those in favor of moving 10B to 11E, please say aye.
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 Councilmember Van Orman. Yeah, it's the, the vouchers.
Vouchers.
Action items, 11E.
To discuss them.
Okay, so I have a unanimous ayes, is that correct? Okay, motion passes 6-0. All right, any other changes? All right.
May I listen through, through the agenda as a matter of fact?
Second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Spencer. All those in favor of approving the amended agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? A motion passes 6-0. Okay, we're up to citizen comments. So thanks for your patience as we get our, for our agenda approvals. So those, if anybody would like to make a citizen comment, anybody who is in council chambers, you'll see these yellow half sheets floating around. There should be some by the table over there. And just the rule, rules of engagement for citizen comments, this is strictly citizen comment period. There will be no, should be no response from the council. If we need to follow up on something, make sure we do have, I know we have names, but if we're going to follow up with you, if you could please provide your contact information. We can have staff follow up if there is something to follow up on. We just ask that comments remain respectful. And I'll give you, we should have the countdown clock on the monitor, but if we get to about 15 seconds left, I will give you a verbal cue to wrap it up, because I will stop everybody at three minutes. So again, if you want to speak and you're in chambers, go ahead and fill these out. They'll get to me. If you're online, please send a note to our meeting host in the chat feature and we will get, get to you. And then after the comments, we will have the city clerk read into the record those who sent in written comments. I think I covered everything. I think so. Okay, all right, so I'm going to, just in the sense of that fairness word, that is. Do this and see who's first. Kim Schmidt's on top. I shuffled.
Kim Schmidt, the other Kim. I do live in Liberty Lake.
That's what I forgot.
Okay, so what I'm gonna, I'm gonna read a few sentences out of tonight's agenda packet. I worked as a teacher, school librarian and staff developer in Alaska from 1988 to 2019. My first master's degree in early childhood education was because I loved helping young children discover the power of their own learning. As a school librarian with a background in literacy development, I use the library as a mechanism to connect with students who are struggling in their reading journeys. The concepts of servant leadership have guided my, me my entire career. I believe it is my civic duty to serve my community, to do the best of my ability in ways to enhance and enrich our shared spaces. Now, what I just read was excerpts from Kim Gerard's application for the Library Board of Trustees. It is equally embarrassing and infuriating that this council has up till now made a mockery of the mayoral appointment, appointment process for a volunteer community service position. In my daily job, I make highly specialized tube and oral feedings for patients that are considered the most medically fragile population in the only, only trauma level two hospital in the area. This includes neonates and, and a level four NICU and children with cancer. At my job, we don't have a take your council members to work day, because that would be really dangerous. And as far as I know, none of you possess the education and training required to do the job. You could easily medically injure a patient or worse. That is not meant as an insult. It's a factual statement. In turn, I likely don't possess the education or training to excel at your daily jobs. I also understand that I do not possess the education or training to be a highly productive member of the Library Board of Trustees. Therefore, I advocate for folks who do possess those skills to fill those positions. With all of that stated, why does this council continue to pretend like they know how to run a library when not a single one of you have the education or training to do so? Know your limits and evaluate or elevate the folks who are willing and qualified to do the job. It's totally okay that we are not perfect at everything. You know, know your limits. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, Pat Dockry. See you hiding back there.
Thank you for not having me.
Tried to do it as random as I could.
I think we're going to get a lot of comment on the library, so I'll comment on trust. At the beginning of the last council meeting, we were notified that the city council was losing trust in the mayor. It turns out that's not a correct statement. In fact, I would say that's a classic case of gaslighting. It's not only not true, it was meant to be injurious to certain parties. I know that the mayor has been dedicated to doing what's best for the citizens the whole time I've known her. And I can't say that of the city council. That's why I thought it was sort of ironic that I trusted the city council a lot less than I trusted the mayor. The problem is, we have a group of four council members that have decided they know what's best for the city. And it doesn't really matter what the citizenry wants or anybody else, for that matter. And so that's resulted in the firing of Kim Gerard off of the Board of Trustees, which we were just talking about. And I, I would like to know, having been involved in the volunteer side of things, both on the, on a board and as a volunteer, who fires the most competent volunteer that they have? The city depends on volunteers. I don't know how many volunteers we have that regularly work with the city, but it's got to be 100 or, or more. And you don't go in there and say, oh, this guy really knows what he's doing. Let's fire him. At least I never did that in my 35 years. And, and I always had a reason. I always would talk, sit down with the guy and tell him why. And I think that's only fair. That did not happen with Kim. There was no discussion. In fact, it was so low key that a lot of people in the audience didn't know that it happened. What we've had then after that was a series of gaslighting about the revisionist history of what the city council has done. They used, they projected their weaknesses onto the people that they don't agree with. And I, I found out that they're now going to go back and go over every ordinance that the city council passed. Now, it's difficult for me to understand the reasoning behind that, but I know that it's right out of the old tail gunner Joe McCarthy's playbook that you do that. And I, I think the city residents need to be aware of this. And take into account when you hear some of these things to do a little research and find out what's really going on. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, Scott Gerard. And yeah, the thing that I forgot, please let us know if you live in the city limits or not.
Hi, I'm Scott Gerard. If you live in the city limits. And I'm just gonna read this here to you guys. Dear Mayor Kamisikus and council members. My name is Scott Gerard and I am privileged to have been Kim Gerard's husband for the past 34 years. There is no one in this world who has a greater passion for education and literacy than Kim. Kim has been an excellent trustee of the library board and she will continue to be the asset to the community she has already proven herself to be. I've admired and seen firsthand for decades the dedication, care, commitment and professionalism she brings to endeavors she chooses to be a part of. She chose to be a part of the library because she sees an area where she can be useful, effective, give back to society and be part of something truly worthwhile. When Kim joined the library board in 2022, there was ongoing controversy. As someone who understands and respects our constitution, laws, the role of the library board and the city council, she will continue to uphold the principles this country was founded on. Having raised two accomplished children, I've watched Kim always make the correct moral decision, even if it was unpopular. She has always understood and embodied the leadership it takes to stick with decisions in the best interest of community well-being. There's been talk of needing new blood and starting over with a clean slate, while, while filling the library trustee positions. But there really is no reason to try to fix what's not broken. The probability that another candidate with Kim's experience, dedication, enthusiasm and track record will appear is very unlikely. She is a known entity with a proven record of professionalism and excellence. Contrary to what was once mentioned, she never disparaged anyone or threatened to sue the city during the library ordinance meetings. She spoke carefully and calmly advocating for the library, as was her assignment and duty as a trustee. Kim is the person you want to have on your library board and the community would be truly fortunate to have her involvement. The benefit the library and community received from Kim's participation is immense. The opportunity cost if she is not reconfirmed would be significant and indefensible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, please confirm the mayor's appointment of Kim Gerard to position two of the library board trustees. Thank you.
11 seconds to spare. Okay, Abby Schuster.
My name is Abby Schuster. I'm a 19-year resident of Liberty Lake. Libraries are where fear and ignorance are met with facts and empathy. The political power grab of certain council members can only rule when fear and ignorance abound. So it follows that they would want to dismantle our libraries and our trust in them. The citizens of Liberty Lake are here tonight, and as we have been here many other nights, to remind you that we love and support our library and are not afraid to stand up in defense of it or the highly qualified library board of trustees members. Please confirm the appointment of Kim Gerard back to the library board of trustees. She is highly qualified and a willing volunteer, ready to serve our community. We are lucky that she is also willing to be brave and put herself up for this position yet again, given what has transpired.
Thank you. Hey, Lynn Atkins.
Apparently, everyone is taller than I am. So Lynn Atkins, yes, I'm a resident of Liberty Lake. And I also am speaking actually on two subjects. One of them is in regards to the potential reappointment of Kim Gerard to our library council. And the other one has to do with transparency and building trust with our community. Well, growing up, growing up, one of the pieces of advice that my mother gave me was take the high road. When things get ugly, if they don't go your way, take the high road. The other piece of advice that I received, I received during my career when I made it to an executive level. And that piece of advice was that whatever you do must be above question. Whatever you do cannot appear to not be on the right side. So what I'm hoping will happen tonight, and I'm so grateful that you voted to hear the appointment, is that this is an opportunity for our council to right an error. We have the opportunity to secure a highly qualified individual. And if we don't get her onto the library board, not only does the library board suffer, but individual members, new volunteers, are going to miss out on the opportunity to learn from everything that Kim has to offer. She's going to help build a whole nother tier of people that can come in and do volunteer work and fill, fill the holes that happen on our library board just through general natural attrition. I think it's important that this council show the community that you're ready to build bridges, that you're ready to move on and put any appearance of discontent with the library board behind us. I think we need to allow for honest and transparent discussion that allows everyone in the community to hear what your reasoning is if you object to having Kim on the board. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, next we have Craig Forbes.
Mayor members of the council, my name is Craig Forbes. I'm a retired attorney living in the River District of Liberty Lake. And to follow up on the points the last speaker made, it's axiomatic in our system of government that due process requires government decision makers at a minimum to have a rational basis for the decisions that they make. In absent a rational decision, a rational basis for a decision, the decision is arbitrary and irrational. So the council is facing again the question that previously based on December 3rd, the appointment of Kim Gerard to the library board. A threshold question that's legitimate for any appointment of this to a board or commission of the city is a core competence for that nominee to do the work that they're being nominated for. But in this case, there clearly cannot be any serious question as to Ms. Gerard's competence and what she can bring to the board. Many speakers have addressed that. And even Mr. Kennedy, and in, after the fact, in explaining his opposition to the nomination, said it wasn't a question of competence, it was something else. There was no discussion at the time, but being challenged afterwards, members of this council stated a couple of reasons for their opposition. One was the need for fresh voices on the library board. Well, that was accomplished at your last meeting on December 17th. You put two new members on the board. Another issue articulated in defense of the opposition to the nomination was a dissatisfaction with the appointment process in general, the mechanics of how the nomination is made and executed. But it's clear that that process issue is separate and aside from the merits of this nomination. And it's clear that because you, last meeting, you put two other members on the board of the library with that same nomination process. And you have three additional nominations tonight before you with that same nomination process. And you'll go forward with those presumably. So if that cannot provide a rational basis for not putting Kim Gerard on the board when you're using that process for your other nominations.
Five seconds.
My time is up.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you.
This council should articulate.
Sir, we need to, need you to stop. Thank you. Thanks for being here, everybody. Do we have anybody online or any additional? Okay, we got an additional one here. And again, I'll remind anybody online, please send a note to our meeting host in the chat feature. We have Sue Hamlet.
And again, I'll remind anybody online, please send a note to our meeting host in the chat feature. We have Sue Hamlet.
Sue Hamlet, I am a citizen of Liberty Lake. And I'm really, I'm not qualified for much of anything, but in the 1960s, I did go to charm school. Yes, I did. I want you to know that. And they taught us so many things. First of all, we were supposed to wear a hat in public. But I was also supposed to wear gloves and yeah, that ain't happening. But they also said, you have to understand as ladies that you do not chew gum in public, only in the ladies room. Good to know. Also, very importantly, what is rude and what isn't? Questions. Questions you ask people like, how old are you? Rude. How much do you weigh? Rude. What are you reading? Also rude. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, we got another one. Got Brad Hamlet, we'll pass it over here.
Yeah, that'll be a tough act to follow. A lot of, everything has already been said about Kim's qualifications. Last time that I was up here at the last meeting, I appealed to your sense of what's right and righting a wrong. And it takes leadership, not authority, but leadership to recognize when you've made a mistake, reevaluate and right the wrong. So I'm asking you again tonight to do that. And for some one of the four people that chose not to vote for Kim in the first place, to reevaluate that decision, be a leader and make the right decision and right choice with Kim. I laid out at my last, at the last meeting, all the, all the contributions that's made to the library board. For the citizens of this community by being on the library board, there's no rational reason for not reappointing her to the board of trustees. And two years on the board does not make for an old voice. She brought in a lot of new ideas from she worked. She immediately jumped in to be helpful in areas that were needed, especially with all the things that are going forward with a proposed new library. So I'm asking you tonight, if you can just move forward in a positive way, heal some of the wounds, because I believe there are wounds that have been that occurred over this whole thing. And let's move forward in a positive way and be positive in the future when it comes to anything with the city, but especially the library since it's been such a focus the last three years. Be greatly appreciated if we can make those decisions as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I don't think we have anything else in person. Do we have anybody online? Okay, we will promote Jody Schumacher so that we can, or unmute her so she can go ahead and make a comment. Please introduce yourself. Let us know if you're a City of Liberty Lake resident or not. And if you can't see the clock, I will give you a warning at fifteen seconds remaining.
Hi, my name is Judy Schumacher. I am a resident of Liberty Lake. I have gotten to know Kim Gerard in the past year and a half through the Library Book Club. We get together once a month and discuss a certain topic that we've read. And I've had an opportunity to, to hear her thoughtfulness and her passion for libraries, for books and for her community. And I feel like she would be an incredible asset on our board. I I know for a fact that she has put in countless hours and energy and the experience she brings is not so easily gained somewhere else. To not have that due to some due to whatever reasons that the folks who voted against her have seems like a terrible waste of a resource in our community that brings so much. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have anybody else online? Okay, and then I will turn it over to Kelsey, our city clerk, to let us know who we received written comments from.
Thank you, mayor. We received written public comments regarding a dog park in Liberty Lake from Nicole Hamlet. We also received written public comments regarding mayor's proposed reappointment of Kim Gerard to the library board from Colleen Robich, Tudy Pittman, Lisa Mueller, Lindsay Willis, Mary Helgason, Kristy Van Marley, Petra Hoy, Scott Gerard and Kyla Scott.
Thank you. All right, one more time, looking around. All right. We, there will be another opportunity for citizen comments at the, close to the end of the meeting before our executive session. We will move on now to announcements, proclamations and special presentations. So we're going to invite Chief Simmons up to do employee recognitions and awards for the police department. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for allowing us to come here to do this. This is a really important, precious thing that we do every year. Unfortunately, this year at a Christmas party, we had a critical incident that kept us from doing this in front of their peers, but we're super thrilled to be able to do this this year tonight. So I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Chief Morgan for the first award.
I'll stall for a few minutes because I'm still waiting on my wardy to come back in. He had his little one, so we had to make sure they got him, our little one taken care of before we got started here tonight. First of all, I'd just like to say thanks for allowing us to be here in order to present the awards to you all tonight. And I really appreciate the opportunity to stand in front of everybody within the citizens and kind of recognize some of our officers that do great things. Do great things all the time. It just doesn't get recognized all the time. We really appreciate the opportunity to do it. This year we did something a little bit different. We brought back an old tradition that we had a couple of years ago where we allowed all the officers to vote on who they thought would be the best selection for the awardee. And with that, I'm going to wait for just about two more seconds until he gets here so he can hear everything.
I see movement.
I think, yeah, I think we might have him coming in the door now, so. Apologize for the delay, but I appreciate it.
All right, bonus attendee.
There we go. No worries, no worries. So start us off. This is the Employee Excellence Award. This is a new award for the department this year and has a special meaning as an award that was voted for by each member of the organization. This award represents the core values of the organization and provides an example for each officer to emulate. This officer has taken various tactical deployment courses. He has been instrumental in the development and providing a training for each of those of our officers. He has received a certification through CJTC as a handgun instructor this year and developed the curriculum for our last range qualification. He's trained each patrol officer in active shooter response and was instrumental in planning and development of that program. In 2024, he received advanced training in criminal intelligence investigations, street crimes, active shooter investigations, supervisor liability, and he still acts as an FTO for our organization to this day. He continues to provide training for our new officers as an FTO and seeks additional responsibilities on a regular basis. The Employee Excellence Award goes to Officer Logan Irving.
You need to run the gauntlet. Congratulations.
Each year, communities come together to celebrate the exemplary service and dedication of law enforcement officers through the Police Officer of the Year Award. This prestigious accolade honors an officer who has demonstrated exceptional courage, integrity, commitment to their duties and commitment to their duties significantly impacting their community. The selection of the Police Officer of the Year involves evaluating several key criteria. Bravery, heroism, integrity, professionalism, community engagement, leadership skills, problem solving abilities. The recognition of a Police Officer of the Year not only honors the individual, but also strengthens the bond between the police force and the community. It highlights the positive aspects of policing and encourages others to strive for excellence in their service. Moreover, it serves as a reminder of the vital role that law enforcement plays in ensuring the safety and well-being of all community members. This award is a testament to the dedication and hard work of those who serve and protect, inspiring future generations to uphold these values in their pursuit of justice and community service. Officer of the Year for the Liberty Lake Police Department is last year, Officer, this year Corporal, also known as Super Cop, Darren Powers. This award is a commendable achievement that highlights his dedication, skill and commitment to serving the community. This accolade reflects his exemplary performance, leadership and ability to foster positive relationships within the community he serves and within the agency. Corporal Powers, last year Officer Powers, recognition how only shines a light on his individual contributions, but also serves to inspire his colleagues and reinforces the importance of community oriented policing as well as good old fashioned policing, which he is very, very, very good at. A lot of very.
Make sure you have mud flaps on those race vehicles.
Congratulations, Corporal Powers. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, citizens. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right. Oh, I had a copy in here, but thank you. All right, next up we have proclamation that we do every year in support of the fire departments all over the country for Community Risk Reduction Week. So we're going to have Kelsey start off with the proclamation and then we'll take a vote of support. I will sign it and we'll get it presented.
Whereas every twenty-three seconds, a fire department in the United States responds to a fire somewhere in the nation. And whereas fires nationally were responsible for 3,670 civilian deaths and seventy-nine percent of these fatalities in 2023 occurred in the home. And whereas fires nationally were responsible for 13,350 civilian injuries and seventy-seven percent of these injuries in 2023 were also related to fires in the home. And whereas an estimated 23.2 billion in property damage nationally occurred as a result of fire in 2023. And whereas Wildland Urban Interface, or WUI, related fires remain a concern nationwide with multi-billion dollar losses as a result in 2023. And whereas the fire service responds to a growing number of medical calls for service surpassing eighty percent of total call volume in some jurisdictions. And whereas community risk reduction is a data informed process to identify and prioritize local risks, followed by integrated and strategic investment of resources to reduce their occurrence and impact. And whereas the value of community support from local, state and national partners to address community risks is recognized to meet the demands on paid combination and volunteer members of the fire service. And whereas the goal of community risk reduction is to reduce the occurrence and impact of emergency events for both community members and emergency responders through deliberate action in the areas of the five Es of education, engineering, enforcement, emergency response and economic incentive. And whereas most fire related and many medical calls for service are preventable with the five Es performed as part of an integrated community risk reduction program. And whereas Monday, January twentieth, 2025 is Martin Luther King Day and is nationally recognized as a national day of service and an opportunity for communities to reduce the risk in their community through a series of educational and other programs.
Before we continue, do we have a motion of support for this proclamation?
So moved.
Thank you.
And second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmember Dunn. All those in favor of supporting this proclamation, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes six zero. Therefore, be it resolved that the week of January twentieth, 2025 through January twenty-sixth, 2025 is Community Risk Reduction Week, a grassroots, grassroots initiative of fire service professionals across the nation to raise awareness of the importance of CRR in the fire service community and an opportunity to make communities safer. All right, we invite the fire department up. Advise this. I remember, I think it was 2021, I was in office maybe like three days and Katie Allen, who was the city administrator at the time called and said, we're scheduled to do a Zoom interview with the fire department on, on Community Risk Reduction Week and, and how important it is. And talk about flying by the seat of your pants, but great to be involved with something like this. Thanks for all your hard work. Okay, we are up to reports and inquiries. First, we have city council. Do we have any reports from the city council since the last meeting? Nobody else, Councilmember Ball?
Well, I just wondered if you were going to bring this up, but I, I think folks should know about this fraud awareness and community training coming up on January twenty-third at Trailhead. I think that's going to be really interesting and citizens are invited to go to assist to RSVP to Officer Fritz. So it's on the website.
Yeah, it's on our website and Facebook and Nextdoor. Thanks for pointing it out.
Yeah, I just thought that sounded really interesting. I'm gonna go. There's so many scammers out there. So, it's on the twenty-third.
Thank you. All right, any other council reports? Right, not hearing any. Mayor's report, we're starting up the new year with, with meetings. I was asked to be Vice Chair of SRTC for 2025. Board meeting's coming up, so it's not official yet. But it is the, the small town group turn to get into the, the Vice Chair, Chair and immediate past Chair circulation. So I'm looking forward to that and assuming that comes through, then I will also serve as Chair in 2026. So I will report back on that after our meeting with SRTC. Don't have anything besides that city administrator report.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council and our guests, a couple of events to remind you about upcoming Washington State Legislature kickoff on Monday, the thirteenth, which will be the sixty-ninth legislature. And as you all remember, we had the opportunity to go through and the council passed a legislative agenda for the city that we will be using to advocate on behalf of that agenda as we have opportunity to do so with our new legislators. And there are a lot of them, not only in the fourth this year, but throughout the state. And so we had the opportunity to bring in a group of interested residents to help us in that endeavor. And so as we get deeper into the session, we will be talking with that group and with the council about various opportunities to put our priorities into action by way of advocacy. And so we'll be talking about this throughout the session. And then also a couple of days after that, on Wednesday, the fifteenth, Governor Ferguson will be inaugurated, and I believe that's on a Wednesday. A little bit later, a couple of weeks down the road, Martin Luther King Holiday, Monday, January twentieth, City Hall and Library will be closed in observance. It's also important to point out that the city council meeting, the regular meeting is on Tuesday, January twenty-first, so it'll be coming off of a Monday holiday for the next meeting. And then a third item, and there's nothing for you to do at this point. I just want to tease this so that you can start thinking about scheduling. We've talked about the need to have more of a half-day retreat style workshop to talk about what I'm tentatively calling a strategic investment plan so we can get more deliberate and methodical about the way that we plan for capital projects. And especially getting ready to go into the comp planning cycle where we have a twenty And especially getting ready to go into the comp planning cycle where we have a 20-year capital facilities plan upcoming, I want to get ahead of this and start talking about what that looks like. And so we'll send out emails and get schedules coordinated, but we want to target somewhere in mid to late March to have this session so that we can get well ahead of our next cycle of putting a capital facilities plan in front of council during the next budget development cycle. Any questions about those before we move on? Okay, we're going to start out the reports tonight with Kelsey delivering a quarter four donation report from last year. Kelsey?
Thank you, Mark. Mayor and council, I just wanted to briefly acknowledge the donations that we received in the last quarter of 2024. And so I provided you each with the spreadsheet, there are the two items that you all had the opportunity to approve at various council meetings in October and November for the Purple Heart sign and then a monetary donation to the police department. Additionally, in addition to those, we had some generous gifts around the holidays, both at City Hall at the police department, so you'll see those listed there as well.
Thank you.
Without any questions regarding donations, we'll move on to the next item. And I think Lisa is going to join us remotely to brief you all on this. And if you'll remember back to last year, we had the opportunity because of our growth at that point to create a public works department. And we've done that, hired the director, everything right now is going smoothly in that regard. But some of the other personnel changes that we made, some of the other programs that we've introduced in that kind of spirit of just evolution that we're undergoing. We have another one to share with you tonight and Lisa's going to brief you on what that is, Lisa?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, thank you, Mark. My apologies, I'm not sure why my camera's not showing, but so I can't turn it on, but be that as it may. Mark has brought to our attention the fact that in dealing with the community satisfaction surveys and in and in engaging citizens throughout the year, that there's a bit of a confusion related to what it means to have planning, engineering, and building services. And so based on that and based on trying to be more transparent and maybe have a clearer moniker of what we do. Mark has suggested that the PEBs Department rebrand themselves as Community Development Department. Again, I've worked in many communities, what we do in my department is, in fact, in many communities classified as community development. And so I know there's a little bit of history with the city, so we just wanted to let you know that we are going to be moving forward with it, it's actually a relatively light lift, changing, printing some new business cards, changing our letterhead, et cetera, changing the letterhead for our permits in building. And so the simple, simple stuff, but just wanted to bring it to your attention in case you had any questions or concerns.
Doesn't look like we have any, but congratulations on the new moniker.
And at first on the report that is submitted at the next council meeting for the departmental reports. And number four is the Trailhead Restaurant Update. We had, as we talked about, the plan was to have both of the leases on the agenda for tonight. And as I emailed the council after the agenda was published, that didn't happen, we're 99% through with these. There was an issue with some formatting that we needed to clarify and we wanted to make sure that we had legal review so that we were absolutely positively certain that when those hit the agenda, they were ready to be considered by the council. And so we are planning to have that back on the agenda, or not back on the agenda, but on the agenda on January 21st for your consideration. As we've discussed earlier, the executive session is to talk about some other specifics related to the proposers themselves, not their proposed leases, but their businesses themselves. And so we will do that during the executive session, but plan to see that agenda item with both leases for your consideration on January the 21st. Any questions about that? All right, moving on to the final item that I've got to brief you about. We actually, it doesn't seem like a year has gone by, but it has since the last community satisfaction survey. And so we're at the point now where, starting next week, we are going to send out invitations for the 2025 Community Satisfaction Survey. And with the help of the Community Engagement Commission and some of city staff and just feedback that we've gotten through the the last iteration of the survey, we've made some changes, hopefully to, well, certainly to drive down cost. But hopefully, in addition to driving down cost, increasing response rate. So we'll be monitoring this very carefully and be reporting back and also hopefully getting the response that allows us to declare the statistical significance much earlier in the year so that we can report out on the findings to you much earlier in the year and use them as we go into the budget development for 2026. So that will all be starting next week. If you happen to be one of those that gets the postcard inviting you to take part in the 2025 survey, we encourage you to do that as quickly as possible, it's going to be all digital this year, no mailed out paper copies. So it'll be much easier to participate. If you have questions, call us here at City Hall and we will be happy to answer them and help walk you through it if need be. Any questions on that item? Yes. How many invitations? The first batch will be 1,500. Well, we have approximately 4,800 households in the city, so they will be going to 1,500 of those households randomly selected. And if that 1,500 doesn't generate the response rate that we need, then we will mail out an additional 1,500 and so forth with the plan to get somewhere between 550 and 600 responses. As you recall, last year, we had the same methodology, we took a different approach to try to get that number and we ended up only getting about 175 responses. So this year, we're hoping to get that target amount back so that we can declare statistical significance, which is important. Mayor, that concludes my report.
And real quick, I'm going to jump back to your item 1A. If anybody, either in the audience or here on the dais is interested, GSI will start to have their legislative update meetings at 9:00 AM on Friday mornings, you can go to their website and sign up, get the Zoom link and you can dial in and listen to the legislative updates every Friday morning at 9:00 AM, starting on the you remember, they started on the 13th or the next week. But you can get that on GSI website, AWC also does an update, but I have not checked into that one yet. It's probably up on their website, I just haven't looked yet. Thank you. All right, next up Spokane Valley Fire Department. Welcome back to the podium.
Little taller. Madam Mayor, City Council, citizens of Liberty Lake, I am also a citizen of Liberty Lake and very proud to be part of this community. So I thank you all. I know you guys' time is very valuable tonight, so we'll try to expedite through this pretty quick. So this is our end of the year report as well as our monthly report, next slide. And this could be quick.
All times going.
Well, we'll just kind of run right through it. Last month, we had, in Spokane Valley Fire Department, we'd had over 2,000 runs just in the month of December. There was a little heat map, it looked really nice. Total incidents last year, total 911 calls for Spokane Valley Fire Department were 24,199 calls. That ended up being for 2023, over 30,000 responses from the Spokane Valley Fire Department. And you guys wonder why there's a difference between 24,199 incidents and 30,000 responses? As you recall, when you call 911, depending on the call, it will initially send one fire engine out with the BLS crew, but if it escalates into a cardiac arrest or into a structured fire, we need more personnel on scene, so it has more resources responding. So that's how many times an apparatus pushes responding, going to those calls. So there's why there's a 6,000 number difference between the amount of 911 calls and the amount of resources that go to those calls. So I hope that kind of answers that. So last month, our Station 8 was the busiest fire station in Spokane Valley Fire Department. It had over 337 calls and for the year, it had over 4,000 calls. Something we usually do is we, we're a regional partner and we respond into the city Spokane as well as in Fire District 8 as well and into Fire District 9. Last month, we went into the city 35 times, Fire District 8 19 times, and Fire District 9 into 17 times. One thing that was a little asterisk is we had one call out to Airway Heights. And if you guys recall, back in December 22nd, when the roads were all icy and resources were pretty limited, with all the accidents going on I-90, we ended up, not just Valley resource, but we ended up going up responding into the West Plains, assisting them on numerous accidents. So not just for wildland fires, but for major incidents and count. So again, being a very good resource for our partners. December was the second busiest on record for Spokane Valley Fire Department. We finished 4.6% ahead of last year's call volume. And total, if you run down for the city of Liberty Lake, we had 108 incidents here in Liberty Lake. Last year, total calls, we had 100, or excuse me, 1,264 calls. And out of 1,264 calls, we had 1,560. Hey, look at that.
Let's start over.
Yeah, oh gosh, no, we'll just keep this thing rolling right now. So we had 1,264 calls for service here in Liberty Lake, next slide. And out of that, you will see that we had 1,567 calls total. Last month, 126, did I screw that up already? We'll continue, next slide. Again, this was the third busiest December on record, Liberty Lake finished 4% behind last year's call volume. Good fact that we weren't as busy, but still the call volume was up. That was it for my presentation, do you got any questions?
Councilmember Kennedy?
Yes. Yeah, thank you for your report, it's always informative. Now, December this year over last year is up, is that in relationship to the amount of population we've increased?
For Liberty Lake, we're 4% below, but we're 4% above department-wide. And I believe that was just, I think, for the aging population that we've been going on more and more medicals. And that's what we've been kind of seeing that trend with the amount of medical calls that we've been going on.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right, thanks so much for being here.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, and we have Liberty Lake's Water District. Nobody in chambers, is there anybody online? See, I don't, I don't see them either, so if we happen to see somebody pop in, we can always go back. All right, so we are up to eight F, I guess, which would be our executive session, so how long do you think we need, Mark?
I'm going to say 15 minutes.
Okay, so we will adjourn to executive session for 15 minutes, we'll be back here at 8:20. We'll give ourselves a couple of minutes to transition, if we do need extra time, someone will come out and let you know. But please hang around, hang online or jump off, have some, have a snack and come back. So we will go ahead and adjourn to executive session.
Mayor, would you announce the RCW?
Page, yes, the reason, we have RCW 42.30.121C regarding real estate.
Thank you.
It died. All right, oh, that's better. Okay, so we had our executive session, as noted, there was no decision made, we just reviewed some confidential information with regards to our restaurant leases and so we're going to go ahead, since Mayor Pro Tem made the motion about moving that in a possible workshop, do you?
I'll make a motion to table the workshop.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we all in favor of tabling the workshop? You say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? I didn't think there would be, okay, thank you. All right, so we'll move on to general business consent agenda.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve general business consent agenda items 10, 10A, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J. That's it.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Spencer, all in favor of approving consent agenda items A and C through J, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes six zero. It's great to walk through, get through a whole page that fast.
All right, yes. You want to do A first or do you want to do 10B first?
Well, I think, if it's okay with the rest of the council, we had moved consent agenda B to the end of 11. If it's okay with everybody, can we move that first so Councilmember Ball can ask her question? But any, anybody opposed? All right.
All right, Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve item 10B, which is now 10, or excuse me, 11A.5. The, excuse me, sorry, the 2025, January 7th, 2025 vouchers.
All right, second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Kennedy and Councilmember Ball, you had a question on the vouchers.
Yeah, it was just kind of an odd thing. So page 14, item 6896, custom tattoos for LLPD at 81075.
Do we, is the chief or deputy chief here? The custom tattoos line item?
Yeah, I, custom tattoos for $810.75, I mean, it's cute that you want matching tattoos.
No, I don't think that's it.
It's not going to be for our department, but actually, we hand it out to the kids when we're going to talk to the people in the community. Yeah, rub on tattoos. It's not matching tattoos or anything like that.
Yeah, okay.
You're very welcome.
Okay, it looks like we're all going to get one now. All right, if there's no other questions on the vouchers, all in favor of approving, now I got to go back again, approving the January 7th, 2025 vouchers, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes six zero.
All right, I'll make the motion on 11A, the reappointment of Arlene Fisher-Maurer to the Community Engagement Commission.
We're going to invite Arlene up to the podium.
Do we need a second?
Oh yeah, sorry, do we have a second? Okay, second by Councilmember Ball, thank you, missed that. Welcome back, everybody, Arlene, as most, I think you all know, is one of the, one of the or the original employee here in Liberty Lake. Went on to build an amazing career, came back to Liberty Lake in retirement and she's been on the Community Engagement Commission for not quite a year, right?
I think you're about right.
It's about, about a year, yeah. So she is eligible for another term, so I'd like to reappoint her. Do you want to tell us a little bit about what you like about the commission or anything? And then we'll see if the council has any questions.
I think what's really interesting is, you know, the commission's new and we're evolving. And every time we have a meeting, we, you know, get tens further down the road. And, and of course, our goal is to, you know, just like it says, we're to engage with the community. And so we're at farmer's markets, you know, I could be at the grocery store and somebody say hello and just engage throughout the community and I'm happy to be a part of it. I've got a lot, a lot of road scars from being a city manager for 43 years and I'm just happy to be home and happy to help. And it's good to be on this side of the bench, I really like that, so. So thank you very much for the appointment, it's my honor to serve.
Thank you, does anyone have any questions for Arlene, she's here? Doesn't look like it, all right. All those in favor of reappointing Arlene Fisher-Maurer to the Community Engagement Commission, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes six zero.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve general business item 11B, the reappointment of Summer Darrow to the Community Engagement Commission.
And I don't see her here, is she online by any chance?
Take a second.
Okay, thank you, we have a second from Councilmember Kennedy. Okay, I thank you. We have a second from Councilmember Kennedy. Oh, boy, okay. And she's um, leave, David remind, where'd you go? There you are. Uh, she's one of our founding members, right? Yes.
Currently vice chair.
Yes, and current vice chair. So um I apologize. Oh, that's right, yes. Um, so I apologize that she is not here. Um, does anyone have any concerns or questions?
Um.
Go ahead.
Let me amend uh the motion to uh postpone Summer's appointment until the. Jan- the next meeting, January, January seventeenth, so she has a chance to be here.
Do we have a second? We have a second from Councilmember Van Orman. And all, any discussion on that?
I I just think that the candidate's prior experience qualifies her and I support the candidate today.
Thank you. All right, any other questions before we go to vote? Go ahead.
Oh, I just really admire Summer's um uh enthusiasm and effervescence. I mean, she's always happy and attends. A lot of events. I will, she's always there. So I think she's a great presence and I, yeah.
Right, thank you. All right, if there's no other discussion, those in favor of the um of the amendment. Who postponed this to the next meeting in January, please say aye. Three, and those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
All right, so three, three motion. Well, I can't, I break it, that's what I'm, I did mess up earlier in the meeting. I could have broken that tie, but I can break this tie. Um, well, you know, in this, I'm gonna go ahead and and go with postponing. Just in the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish, to give the council a chance to ask questions. Um, and I will, if I have to go back to my old neighborhood and drag her butt here at the next meeting, I'll do that. So, all right.
So then we have the original. We have to vote on it again because we, we voted to amend the original motion. Do we need to vote on the original motion, which is now a postponement?
No, your amendment was takes precedent over the motion.
Okay.
All right, all right, C.
Uh, thank you. Uh, general business, I'll make a motion to approve general business item eleven C, the reappointment of Bill Norman to the Community Engagement Commission.
Second.
Second.
We have a second. And is Bill here? Let's see, hiding. He may be in the same situation. Okay.
I'll uh amend my motion uh to postpone the appointment, uh reappointment of Bill Norman until the next council meeting. So he has the opportunity to attend.
Okay, motion and second for the amendment. Those in favor of postponing uh postponing the appointment. Reappointment of Bill Norman to the next meeting in January, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so I will I will um follow suit with this one as well. We will um do everything we can to get Summer and Bill here. Either online or um in person at the next meeting. And I know, David, uh, you're, that that kind of messes up your next meeting, but please. Oh, you won't be out of a quorum? Well, we'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Okay. Or can, or can we motion to extend, extend their term to the end of January? Is that possible? Does that break the rules?
Hmm, I would, I would say no.
Okay, it's worth asking.
Clarify, you mean no, it doesn't break the rules or no, you can't do it?
I I'm, I don't have, it's by, there's, it's, the appointments are by ordinance, so I suspect what's in the ordinance wouldn't provide for that.
That's why I wanted to clarify.
No, you would not be able to do that.
Um, so just point of clarification, were all of these individuals told that they needed to be here or?
David was handling communication.
They were all invited, but didn't necessarily have to be here.
Yeah, we, we need to make sure that's more. Oh. Okay, um, all right, well.
I feel like we could, you know, unless somebody has a, is is opposed to moving forward. I think we were just making the vote in in order to extend them the courtesy to speak, but um if it's gonna prevent a quorum in their next meeting. That seems kind of.
So we have already approved.
Before you do anything, um, the question is, I want, I wanna know is whether or not you want to vote on them or not. If the decision is that the council wants to take vote, then we're gonna have to do. Redo what was done and then move forward. So I guess before we go down that and start making motions, we should clarify what the process of what the council wants to do.
I, to me, I think the answer is yes. Um, again, as Councilmember Spencer said, I was uh just trying to. Give them the courtesy of being able to attend. Um, but if it's A, gonna prevent a quorum. And B, Bill can't be here no matter what Tuesday night we do. Um, it seems to me that we should go back and just approve them.
Guide us.
So we're gonna do this individually, so what we'll start with Summer Darrow. We need to have a motion for consideration of the vote that was taken. Have to have a second and then vote on that. You'll bring it back as if she wasn't a- approved. You can make another motion to approve her second and vote on that.
Okay, I will make a motion to reconsider item eleven B, the reappointment of Summer Darrow to the Community Engagement Commission.
Second.
Okay, motion and second.
So this is just on the reconsideration.
This is a reconsideration of to move Summer to the next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so the, we need, we need a vote on the reconsideration.
Correct.
Okay, those in, any questions, comments? Yeah. Yeah, un- unfortunately, Bill won't be able to make it to any of the meetings, so we need to consider that. I, Mayor Pro Ten, you had your hand up.
Well, I was just gonna mention, one of the items on our workshop discussion list is the commission appointment process and how we go about doing that. So the sooner we can have that, the better, uh, I feel like, because I think there's a lot of different ideas on what we shouldn't, shouldn't be doing. Um, but until then, I, you know, I don't wanna deny the, them the opportunity to, to have a spot.
Okay, so we need a vote to thumbs up, thumbs down on the reconsideration, or are we?
Yes, the reconsideration.
All right, so those in favor of. Moving ahead with the reconsideration for Summer Darrow, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, those opposed? All right, motion passes five one. Okay, then go ahead.
Do you both reconsiderations or just?
No, you're only doing the one that was voted on.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the reappointment of Summer Darrow to the Community Engagement Commission.
Second.
Okay, any further questions? All right, those in favor of reappointing Summer Darrow to the Community Engagement Commission, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, those opposed? All right, motion passes five one, all right.
I'll make a motion to reconsider now the postponement of Bill Norman's reappointment to the Community Engagement Commission to the next meeting.
We have a second. We have a second by Councilmember Spencer. Those in favor of the reconsider, moving forward with the reconsideration, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, those opposed? Motion passes five one.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Bill Norman to the Community Engagement Commission.
Second.
Okay, we have a second by Councilmember Spencer. Um, any further discussion? I hear any of those in favor of reappointing Bill Norman to the Community Engagement Commission, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, those opposed? Okay, okay, cuz I saw your hand up both times. He's not, he cannot make it on Tuesday nights due to church, church. So is that yea or nay? Okay, motion passes five one. Okay.
And I will need assistance on the next one.
Can we have a motion um to approve the appointment of Kim Gerard?
I move to uh uh the appointment of Kim Gerard as a library board trustee.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Dunn and a second by Linda Ball. Okay, all right, discussion. Oh, no, actually, first let me have Kim come up like we did our other candidates. Reintroduce yourself and then there'll be some time for questions and then we'll just go to vote, discussion and vote.
Good evening, I'm Kim Gerard. I'm here to ask for your reconsideration to appoint me to the Liberty Lake Library Board of Trustees. Because I believe that appointing me for a second term on the board would serve the best interest of this family-focused literate community. Books, reading and libraries have been the focus of my personal and professional life. Additionally, I've lived a life in service to the community in which I live, because I believe that we must all work together to enrich the community. Community transpen, transcends petty disagreements and differences of opinion. I have spent my life in service to others in my community, building connections one relationship at a time with a servant's heart. My dad was a Vietnam helicopter pilot in the US Army. We didn't have a lot of money. Somehow my parents decided to sign me up for the weekly reader book club of the month, sent a book to me every month in the mail. Those books always moved with us, even though we had weight limits on how much stuff we could move. Inside the front covers, you can see stamps where we played library as children. Those books moved with me to college and sat on a shelf, excuse me, in my dorm room and were read by friends, taught taking study breaks. Years later, as a teacher, I shared those same books with my students as I talked about my own literacy journey. They now have a shelf of honor in my home library as I wait for grandkids to read them to. Not that we're in any hurry for that. I've told my kids, no weddings or grandkids until their frontal lobes are completely developed. Libraries were my happy place as a child. I remember laying on the floor, reading for as long as I could. Legends from other cultures, peanuts, books about animals. In fourth grade, Mrs. Romero. Read this chapter books every day after lunch recess as we rested with our heads on the desks. Old Yeller, Hippie Longstocking, Charlotte's Web, Where the Red Fern Grows, The Twenty One Balloons and Ribsey. I can still hear her melodic voice in my head and her reading aloud taught me how to read through a chapter book. And that opened up a whole new part of the library and changed the course of my life. I knew then that my life would always include books. In college, I spent many hours in the library studying and worked at the archives at the University of Alaska Fairbanks. Helping process historical collections and helping researchers find information they needed for their own work. It was the early days of computers, I'm a little old, and so old card catalogs and microfiche were still the norm. Around me, the archivist was working to help record and document some Alaska native languages that were in danger of being lost. We received a collection of documents from an Alaskan author, whose work was all on nine-inch floppy disks. And even at that time, the university had no computer to read them. I had an English professor who was also an opera singer and he read Beowulf to us in the old English that it was originally written in. I was astounded to realize how quickly language evolves and how in the modern world, access to information is changing so rapidly. That in just a few years' time, a university has to figure out how to retrieve data from a source. Since my college years, we have entered the information age and libraries are evolving to meet the needs of a changing society. Just as they have since the first libraries began more than twenty five, two thousand five hundred years ago. I spent more than thirty years as a teacher in Alaska, teaching mostly kindergarten through third grade, teaching teachers and working as a school librarian. In college, I wanted to teach fifth and sixth graders because of the amazing literature for kids that age and wanted to help them find their power as writers. But I got hired as a naive twenty-two-year-old to teach extended-day kindergarten and high school art. In a rural Alaska community that was thankfully on the road system. The nearest grocery store was forty miles away and I saw more moose than cars driving to work. I was the only kindergarten teacher and my only ideas about how to teach kindergarten came once a month in a magazine from far, far away. In the closet of my Adco trailer classroom, for kindergarten, I found a reading book, a spelling book, a math book. A handwriting book, a social studies book and a science book. I didn't know much about teaching kindergarten, but I knew that a day filled with textbooks probably wasn't the best way to engage little ones in learning. So that's where I became a kid watcher. I watched the kids and learned that as a teacher, if you watch them closely enough, kids will show you what they need. I fell in love with watching five-year-olds grow into six-year-olds and fell absolutely in love with helping children learn how to read and write. And discover the power of their own brains. My third year of teaching, at age twenty-five, I had a foster grandma volunteer in my classroom of kindergarteners twice a week. One day before library class, Grandma Ida told those kids that when she was a girl, she wasn't allowed to learn how to read. Because her skin was black. The sharecropper's daughters used to sneak books into a haystack in the barn and those girls taught her how to read. She told the kids to check out as many books as the librarian would allow and she would read to them when she was at school. Later, she held my hands and she looked into my eyes and said, you are changing these kids' lives. Literacy is a way to break the cycle of poverty that weighs all of us down. My first master's degree ended up being in early childhood education, which includes children up until about the age of eight. I was driven to learn as much as I could so that I could be the best teacher to serve children and families in my care. Early in my teaching career, the district had an in-service speaker and a text that talked about just how a few generations ago. Extended families stayed in general proximity to one another and built strong family and community networks. In the early nineteen nineties, which is was, he pointed out that now children are growing up without proximity to that extended family. So if they have questions about life and how to navigate its intricacies, they have fewer adults to turn to and so kids turn to their peers for answers. Peers who don't, who know as little or less about how to solve problems. This speaker helped schools and communities look at assets in place to support children, assets like churches. And school workers and scout leaders and coaches and libraries. It was a profound lesson for this young adult that turned this former transient army brat into a community-focused worker bee. Every school I worked at, I took on extra tasks and attended PTO meetings, even though I didn't have any kids of my own. I learned to love the game of grant writing and help my schools access additional funds. I showed up on weekends and evenings and had my class and families over for holiday parties and year-end banquets and barbecues. And then I had my own kids, so I transferred schools and put all that energy into my own neighborhood community. For four of those years, as my children were in elementary and middle school, I got my school librarian endorsement and served as a school librarian. In my thirty-plus years, four years was the longest I stayed in a single job assignment. Because I craved the learning that went along with moving to a new position. As a librarian, I loved knowing all the kids in the school. I loved ordering books that I knew specific kids would love. And I loved building relationships with those kids who were reluctant readers. With my literacy development background, I eagerly took groups of kids who were struggling learning to read, but had no special ed plan to support them. The library was a place for kids to come and hang out and talk about books. One day during a conversation about dog books, one boy who'd been sitting in a corner engrossed in his own reading suddenly looked up and said. If there's a dog on the cover of a book and there's a medal on that book, you know that dog's gonna die. He's not wrong. Parent-child book clubs, author studies, book fairs, lunch with a librarian, detention with the librarian, I loved it all. The library is the heart of a school and I loved helping readers thrive. We moved to Liberty Lake in the late summer of two thousand nineteen, after my youngest graduated from high school in Chugiak, Alaska. I finished a second master's degree in educational leadership in my empty house in Liberty Lake. Our furniture hadn't even arrived yet. I wasn't sure if I wanted to work after we moved, but then COVID happened. My sardonic pro tip is to never retire and move just prior to a pandemic. It makes for a very difficult and lonely transition in life. When things finally started to open up, I applied to be a library board of trustee. I only knew a few younger moms from a book club we'd started during the pandemic, where we met outside at playgrounds once a month, all year long. To talk about books while their little ones played. After two years of living here, those were basically still the only people that I knew. After living in a school environment, I went, so we all had struggles. My first meeting as a trustee was to attend the city council meeting where the council decided to leave gender queer on the shelf. The rigidity of communication in a meeting bound by Robert's Rules of Order was shocking to my kindergarten teacher system. Where as soon as a paintbrush flies through the air at playtime, we sit and have a class meeting about proper paintbrush etiquette. I am not comfortable at all standing up here and speaking in this room. And the first few times I spoke during library trustee reports, Mayor Kaminski had to ask me to step closer to the microphone. I write out everything I wanna say, I practice at home, and then I sit here with a nauseous stomach and sweaty palms. Even when just sharing trustees' reports, I still wanna chicken out. During the contentious meetings about the library ordinance, I spoke twice. I was anxious about speaking, but as a trustee, I felt it was my responsibility to advocate for what was in the best interest of the library and community. Because of what I know about libraries. Based on my experience, based on what is laid out for me and. The guidelines, based on my concerns, it was my obligation to speak out. At no time did I call anybody names or threaten to sue the city. As a teacher of so many years, trust me, I learned that different people, different families have different expectations and needs. I respected those differences and we moved on for the benefit of the children. As a teacher trainer, I. As a teacher trainer, I emphasize that teaching is the business of building relationships. The relationships we have with our students, with their parents, with our colleagues, with our administrators, and with our community. The same tenet holds true for the situation in which we find ourselves at this juncture. At the conclusion of the ordinance meetings, I was satisfied that the system of checks and balances. Had played out just like Mr. Harris in sixth grade taught me that they would. It ended as our system was designed and we moved on with the business of taking care of the library, or so I naively thought. Our shared humanity was lost in the drama of a library ordinance, our shared concerns for our community lost. Looking back as someone new to this whole game of politics, I wish there had been more communication. I assumed that if any of you had questions of me, you would have reached out to me and asked. I wish that I had had the confidence and understanding of this system to reach out to each of you. Perhaps moving forward, communication protocols can be clarified when issues arise. Of course, the people who know me would support me. But I'm standing here tonight because of the encouragement and support of members of this community who were complete strangers to me before this. After I retired, I found out that I am much more introverted than I realized. And the attention this has drawn has been very uncomfortable. My hope is that after these few moments, you will understand me as a person, as a community advocate. A little bit better and confirm me to a second term as trustee so that I may continue to support Jandy. And her fabulous staff to the best of my abilities as they endeavor to make a library a community space for all of us.
Right, thank you. All right, now I, that, can't, can't, can't do that, guys, sorry. Um, as much as you want to, um, all right, so now we open it up if the council has any questions for you. They may have any questions.
Thank you for that explanation, more history on your background and I appreciate that. I guess my question for you is if, if you are not reappointed this, this evening. Is your intention to cut ties with the library and no longer assist the library in any way?
No. My ego is not tied to a title. My sense of community service and servant leadership is not tied to a title. But I believe that when you have a community. And you have qualified volunteers step up to, to do the work. That you should honor that. I, I, when we become a council member or a trustee member, or we become a committee member, we don't. Give up our First Amendment rights to share ideas. Me standing up here and calmly sharing my ideas was not meant to offend anybody. I was doing my job as a trustee. For the community, knowing what I know about libraries and was there some drama? Yes, that did not come from me. But around the country, libraries are very threatened. And I think that was the dramatic response that we saw happen here. Did I have control over every person who come, came up here to speak? I did not. I, I don't. I've been married to Scott for thirty-four years and I don't even have control over what he says. Or my young adult children particularly, so. I, I will still support the library. And, and, and actually, I will have fewer constraints because I won't be tied to the obligations of being a trustee like I was. Like I said, in kindergarten, and when there's a problem, you just take care of it right there. You communicate about it and. You know, one mom I met with every day after school for two years because. She didn't want her son to have an IP, so I'm just used to doing whatever communication is necessary to get a job done. I'm not afraid to have a conversation. I am afraid of the formality of this. I'm not comfortable with it. And when Anna got up last time and said she didn't know if she had thick enough skin for this. I thought I wouldn't have had that when I started either. It's been very much a learning process outside of my comfort zone.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Ball.
Okay, I don't have a question for you. I just want to say that I admire your background and it's incredible and your honesty. Really mean that.
Any other questions? Councilmember Dunn.
Not a question, but more of a moment of gratitude. Like one of our citizen comments mentioned today that our city, it doesn't just rely, we celebrate the volunteers in our midst to give their. Time and talent to try and make this the community that we, we want it to be. And Mr. Gerard, you're a treasure of the talent that this board requires. The tenacity and the passion you show and standing at this podium for a second time. Uh, is a testament to the value you have played and I, I hope you will go on to play in this role. Thank you, Kim, for all you've done for our community and what I hope you'll be able to go on and do.
Thanks. I think I saw Councilmember Van Orman's hand up.
You did. Kim, thank you. Thank you for sharing what you did. Now I'm going to share a little bit about what nobody really heard from me, mainly because I've got my asthma and. But here it goes. Um, I'm probably one of the only members here that have been here from the very beginning. Two thousand three, we started the library and I helped to write that ordinance. Uh, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, all the way to two thousand eleven, I was mayor for the city of Liberty Lake. So I bought the library that you're currently in. The, the one thing that kind of. Has gotten me all along is exactly what we've got written up there. We set the library as a municipal library underneath thirty-five A. At what point, and you kind of referenced it before when you came back to the podium, about upholding the laws. Do you in your role feel that you are autonomous or are you advisory? To the city council?
I feel like we are, we are advisory. We have done that all along. We're, we're not. We are not, we are, we are beholden to the laws of our community.
Okay, at what point between two thousand twenty-two and now has changed? Because we were a municipal library then?
We are a municipal library now.
And we're a municipal library now.
We are a community of people who have to communicate and work together to figure things out. And when somebody. Questions the library, it's not wrong for a trustee who is supposed to advocate for the library. To question what's happening in a respectful way.
I, I agree with that.
I was not disrespectful and I am being punished. Because I spoke twice.
I wouldn't say necessarily punished, but I have heard from a few board members. That have stood up and still state that they are autonomous.
Did I say that?
No, you did not.
Thank you.
So I, I appreciate the.
As I said in my thing, I, I, as a career, had to take in a variety of personalities. And worldviews and parenting styles and administrator styles. And we just figure it out together.
Well, my hope as a city council member that. As a municipal library, that we still have an open dialogue with our residents always.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Spencer.
I'll just make a few comments. So, uh, the reason why I asked the question earlier was. Because I think some of the citizens who have spoken to us or sent, sent emails into us think it's an either-or thing. Um, that if you're not appointed to the board of trustees, that you're somehow going to be lost as an asset to the city. Someone who's going, going to decide they're not going to be involved in the library, they're not going to do what they're. Um, so I, I agree with your statement. There, there would, you just brought up the, the, the idea that perhaps the comments that you made during the, the library ordinance discussions. Uh, were the reason that, that some of us may have decided to not renew your appointment to the commission. Uh, to the board. Um, that's not, that's not my point of view. Um, I don't know what, what anybody, anybody else. Uh, thinks, um, in, in my, from my point of view. And, and there's been several people who brought up trust, trust issues between the city council and, and the library board. Let's talk about that specifically. Back in twenty twenty-two, uh, we had the, and, and I wasn't aware that your, your first meeting was, uh, the. Um, city council meeting in which they had the, the book reconsideration. I wasn't aware of that. Uh, that was one of the first, in fact, that was the first city council meeting I had attended just as a citizen. So we were both there, you know, same time. And, and I brought this up before, uh, at that time, I observed around the dais. Um, many questions about the policy. And those city council members at the time were all reassured. Hey, if you want to talk policy, we can do that, but we're not, that's not what we're here to do tonight. And so, uh, from that point forward, and again, I wasn't on the council at the time, I was appointed several months later. Uh, or at least the next month later, I believe, but I observed council members over the, over the course of. Uh, time from that book reconsideration meeting all the way until the mid-October meeting of that year. I observed multiple council members say, hey, where are we at with this discussion that we're going to have with the library board? Um, the mayor multiple times reassured those council members, hey, they're working on it, we're going to have a discussion. So that's why nobody, nobody pushed, there was no trust issues at that point. There was no, there was no expectation that the library board was going to do something. You know, that was contrary to what we were expecting. So at that point in, in October, I was on the council. And, uh, and I don't remember who exactly came up and presented. It was, it was a, a. Um, just a report rather than, than a workshop. And, uh, so several of us were caught off guard. I, I don't make it a habit to go and watch all the commission meetings. I don't have time for that. Um, so I was caught off guard, but then I was accused of dereliction of duty. Because I hadn't been following every meeting. I had no reason to believe that we weren't going to have a conversation. So after that, I went back to the, the two, the two previous meetings of the library board, September and October. And, and I, because I was interested to find out, where did this go sideways? Why did they go ahead and, and approve the, the, uh, policy without having a discussion with the city council? Because that was our expectation. And, um, in the September meeting is when all of you voted. I would have loved for you or any one of those members of the board to have said. Let's stop and let's have a conversation with the city council. They're expecting that. I would, I would love to say that you were the one that stood up and said that.
Well, I think in my naivete, I, looking back, I may, I wasn't even really aware. I was just doing what, I was going to the meetings. I wasn't aware, like, it takes a while to assimilate to a new system and a new series of expectations. And things can happen that you don't intend to because you're learning and there's cognitive dissonance and you are trying to figure it out. And not look like an idiot when you're at the library board meetings because it's your first or second or whatever meeting. I mean, as a new city council person.
We, we experienced it both at the same time, right?
So it goes back to, I think, some grace and some self-reflection, which I have been doing and. Yeah, just gonna.
I appreciate that excellent, eh, eh, explanation. Um, what I'm trying to point out is, um, many of the citizens who have come in since then. Didn't, didn't see the lead up to that, to that moment. All they saw was several of us get caught off guard. And in the very next meeting, called the library board out for, for the decision they had made. Um, and so then, from that point forward, it was the city council has broken the trust of the citizens. But that's not the facts. I just laid out the facts for you. And, and it has, I don't have anything personal against you or any other member of the board of directors, but those are the facts. We were expecting to have a conversation. We were caught off guard. And I would invite anybody here in this audience or who will listen to this recording later. To go back and look at those board meetings from September and October of twenty twenty-two. And tell me if, after watching that, you can understand why it went from. Yes, the council is expecting a, a workshop on this. And two, uh, why it turned into a report. And three, why, why didn't nobody at any point stop and say. The, the city council is expecting a discussion on this and perhaps we should do that before we make this vote. So, uh, so that's, that's my opinion on it. I didn't, uh, the last time we voted on this, I didn't really feel like I, I needed to give an explanation for that. And, and that's just a personal preference, um, but that was the reason for my vote and will be the reason for my vote tonight.
Thank you for that. All right, anybody else before we move ahead? All right, not hearing any. Um, all those in favor of appointing Kim Gerard to the library board of trustees, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion fails two to four.
Thank you.
Okay, um, all right, we're still up meeting, we still have business to continue, guys, so. Please, please keep the chatter down in the diet, in the audience. We're up to council. We're up to council comments, um, so that also.
What?
Oh, no.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we did that.
Yeah, we moved it ahead, sorry.
Yeah, um, council comments, now's the time for any, anything additional for the council to, um, bring up. Not including our advanced agenda items. Does anybody have anything? Councilmember Ball.
Um, yeah, I wanted to bring up, um, in future meetings, any member of this council. Um, if you're going to make a presentation regarding a financial matter. And we have not, we, meaning the rest of the council, have not been privy to your calculations. I, I think you need to do so. In other words, think back to school, show your work. If you're going to show us numbers or present numbers verbally that none of us have seen before. Um, it's not fair and it's not, um, it puts us at a, eh, eh, on an uneven playing field. So I would like to, um, suggest strongly that you show your work. Because it's not fair to the rest of us.
Thank you very much. Anybody else for council comments? All right, moving on, um, we have no public hearings or appeals. We have no resolutions. We have no ordinances. We have no emergency ordinances. Upcoming agenda items is next. So you have the, the matrix in front of you, um, for the next meeting in January, we have. Discussion on the length of meetings with Councilmember Kurtz and discussion tentatively, um, with, um. City Administrator McAvoy on recycling service. Um, February fourth at six, we've got land capacity analysis with Lisa. Uh, and then we have, um, some other ones here. We have tagged city council rules of procedure and code of ethics for. Uh, first of the year. Obviously, that's not happening tonight. We have a couple of things scheduled for the twenty-first. And with the, um, land capacity analysis at six PM on the fourth, this might give us a chance to. Um, have those, uh, maybe at a six PM for the rules of procedure and the code of ethics, um, with the. If I guess my, my suggestion would be only one of those because it will take up the whole hour. Who's, I don't know who's handles up first.
So I'll, I'll just say, um, so council member, um, Kennedy and Kurtz and I are working on the council, uh, rules of procedure. Um, we've, we've only gotten as far as making all our comments on a document, so we still have to schedule a meeting. I would say we'll probably be ready. Um, we, we've got to touch base with Councilmember Kurtz, but probably first or second, um, meeting in February would be my guess.
All right, well, well, do you want us to tentatively put it for the first meeting in February? We can always move it, it's going to be closer. All right, and code of ethics.
I was going to, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. Oh, no, go ahead.
Okay, um, I was going to see if we can go ahead and do the commission appointment process on the fourth as well. Um, and I, I have, I don't, I don't need any more staff support for that. Um, and we'll just be discussing some different ideas that everyone has. On that, so I'm thinking either February fourth or maybe the second meeting in February would be good for that.
Okay. When we get together tomorrow, um, director's meeting, we'll kind of try to put all this stuff together because some, sometimes we do have staff things that come up that are. For city business that we may have to plug in, so, um, we will look at that.
And then my second question.
Question.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm grateful, um, Councilmember Cargo for your efforts and I just asked that you include any agenda published on Friday.
Yeah.
Any materials you expect to review with the council on Tuesday?
Yep, we will do that.
Great.
My second question to, um, Mark was, are we ready with the Transparency Act? I know we were tweaking some of the items in it last year and we were close to it and then we kind of pushed it off.
So the, the, the four material items that were, that made up that discussion, we have implemented across all boards and commissions and council. So we want to codify that in some way. We, we can certainly do that. Um, that may be something that the rules of procedure incorporates as they make any changes that, that they're going to recommend making. Any of the information that came out of the town hall that we want to consider for some future, whether it be change to a policy or introduction of a new policy or something like that, we're going to need to, we're going to need to workshop. Well, I, I will say one thing that came out of that that we've already accomplished is, uh, the legislative advocacy workshop. It's already been done. Um, but the four items that started the conversation have already been implemented.
Right. I'm just wondering if we can codify it.
Absolutely, absolutely we can.
Great.
And we kind of skipped over code of ethics and social media. I think, uh, councilmember Curtis was leading that as well. Should we wait to hear from her then?
I believe there's also a committee looking at.
Yeah. Who else is on that with her? I forgot.
Dan and I are on that.
Okay, how's that going? Have you met?
No, yet.
Okay, all right, so maybe March?
Yeah.
All right, and then, um, I know we had, I, um, David Clay had actually reached out to me yesterday by text on the secondhand smoke item. I know I've touched base with Mark on it, um, a little bit. Um, and I had told David I was, I couldn't, I couldn't respond to him yet, but I acknowledged his, I acknowledged his texts, so I'll get back with him a little bit, but I don't know where we are on that. I know there were some challenges.
I, that's a, that's a kind, uh, description. We, we can have a conversation about that at any time. The proposal that's been made, um, is, as far as staff is concerned, a non-starter. But we can have a conversation about looking at some strategies to address the problem.
Or at least, you know, have the, have the workshop that, if it's five or ten minutes to, to address what those concerns and challenges and starters are. So, so we know where we are and we can either move on or wrap it up.
That'd be great. Can I ask you a quick question? When we create, I, I don't remember the social media committee. Did we create a social media committee?
Yeah, yeah. It was, I think it was maybe the same day.
I think it was.
Procedure.
Okay, okay. I was gone at the end of that meeting, so that's why I don't remember.
Right, yeah. Okay, in the next town hall, we're looking at doing this, what, once a quarter or do we settle on twice a year?
Uh, probably twice a year is a more realistic, um, outlook and, and we had discussed, uh, possibly during the next joint meeting between the commission and the council that put some framework about what the next topic would be.
Sounds good. All right, so anybody else have, anybody have anything else they want to add for the future workshops at this point? Speak now or forever hold your peace, or at least till the next meeting. All right, okay, um, so we are up to citizen comments. So, um, same rules as before, if you'd like to make a public comment, um, we've got our yellow sheets on the, by the table over there, three minutes. Let us know, um, if you're a resident of the city or not, and if we have somebody online, please send a note to our meeting host in the chat. So we'll start off with Shawna Dean.
I was waiting for people to pay attention. It's with a heavy heart that I said that resignation from the library board of trustees effective immediately. After careful consideration, I've come to the conclusion that the current environment within the city council has become untenable for me to continue serving in this capacity. Over the past months, it has become evident that certain members of the city council are not supportive of the library's mission and autonomy. The recent actions taken against trustee Kim Gerard, a dedicated and invaluable member of our board, have highlighted a vindictive attitude among some council members. Their decision to remove Ms. Gerard despite her tireless efforts and significant contributions to the library has underscored a lack of respect and support for the library's role in our community. The vote on December, which led to her ousting and prior council actions have revealed a concerning trend of prioritizing political agendas over the library's best interests. The unwarranted accusations and lack of transparency in the decision-making processes corroded the trust that is essential for effective governance. It's no coincidence that councilmember Cargill heads at Mountain State Policy Center and is an advisor to Project Twenty Twenty-Five, which proposes criminal charges and incarceration of librarians. And proposes defunding I M L S, which administers federal funds to libraries. Every time he gets his name in the news associated with posing anything related to the library, he probably gets another donation. I hope you're all aware of that. The library should be a bastion of free speech and a place where community can access diverse perspectives and knowledge. Unfortunately, the current dynamics within the city council indicate a shift away from these core values. The library's autonomy and the ability to serve all members of the community, including underrepresented groups, are being compromised. Given these circumstances, I can no longer in good conscience serve on a board that is undermined and very body meant to support it. My commitment to the library and its missions remains unwavering. I'll continue to support it in other capacities as a concerned and engaged citizen. I urge, in the future, the city council to reconsider its approach and to work towards a more collaborative and respectful relationship with the library board. The well-being of our community and the integrity of our library and city depend on it. We have been in the news way too often because of this city council's decisions on what people can and can't read. And I say it that way because two council members voted to ban a book. Don't tell me this isn't about book banning. Thank you for the opportunity to serve. I wish the board all the best.
Kim.
Mayor Kaminsky, councilmember Dunn and councilmember Ball, thank you for your support. And your unwavering confidence in me. The rest of you, your ego stewed for a year over the fact that people questioned you. I had no idea that the majority of a city council expects all city boarding committee members to forego their First Amendment rights and swear an oath of fealty to a council of extremists. Citizen volunteers stepping up to serve must absolutely be able to advocate for the entity they are serving. They serve their board or committee and the community. They don't serve you personally. You have blatantly revealed that you will not work with people who disagree with you and lead with petty vengeance instead of wisdom. You have brought the ugliest of national politics to our beautiful city. I expected two of you not to confirm my reappointment. The other two, I knew had a long history of participating in the establishment and growth of this wonderful community I chose to call home. I expected you both to know that you can disagree and move forward together. Member Kennedy and member Van Orman, this decision is a stain on your legacy. The publicly rude bully council is a dark cloud over this community and the rational people who live here. You were so awful at the last meeting that we were expecting our new trustee, she started her talk by saying she didn't think she had the skin for this. Member Kennedy, you owe me apology for publicly accusing me of threatening to sue the city and calling people names. Member Cargill, you scrutinize past meetings to list all the predictions made about what would happen if the library ordinance passed. You are so careful with details. You surely realize that member Kennedy was mistaken in his rambling accusations. You chose not to include that in your list, and that's a reflection on your character. I'm here tonight because of the support of people who know me and know how hard I work and because of strangers who have reached out to me since you first denied my appointment in December. The library will be fine without me. We are all replaceable. My ego is in no way tied to a title, and now I am free to support the library without the constraints that being a trustee requires. Member Van Orman, member Spencer, member Cargill and member Kennedy. I will be making a donation to the American Library Association's Intellectual Freedom Roundtable each month in each of your names until you no longer have a chair and nameplate in this room. When that's done, our city will be better off.
Thank you. All right, Kim Schmidt.
Kim Schmidt, I live here. This is something I don't speak about much, especially at a public level. One of the reasons I care so much about having a library is because I was raised in a home where my dad is illiterate. That caused me a lot of extra work and stress as I was a kid. And it still does to this day, because now I have a disabled mom who used to handle all the business, who can't do it anymore. And now I have to handle all the business. There's many things that, um, you know, I love and appreciate about my dad. He was a master carpenter. He taught me to measure twice, cut once. Y'all did not measure. You really didn't measure. You just started cutting. You made so many cuts. You're out of product. You can't cut anymore. There's a few things that have come up. How absolutely tasteless it is to expect people to come back and volunteer their time when they're no longer a member of the Board of Trustees? That'd be like, oh, it's cool, they can just come back anyways, no big deal. We'll just fill their spot with somebody else. That hurts. That is using people. That's what that's doing. Now, last year, when I was going around knocking on every single door in the River District for a couple candidates that were running for seats and for this dais right here, and, um, everybody knows that on these surveys that we get back from the city, everybody cares about public safety. Well, when I was out on foot going door to door, speaking with anybody who had opened the door, the number one question I asked was, how is, or how does the candidate that I am supporting feel about the library ordinance? Is it every time? The next question was, do they support book bans? The funny thing is all this, this isn't a book ban talk that's been going on, is when you go and look at the public comment that was sent, uh, to your city council emails that I got from a Freedom, uh, Freedom of Information Act uh, public records request, even your own people mentioned more often than not about banning books. People on your own side mentioned they wanted books to be banned. Some flat out said, ban. Others talked around it, but they flat out said they wanted books banned. Do not say this is not about banning books. How stupid do you think we all are? This is a very disappointing, I mean, honestly. I had hope. I really did. I had a little bit of hope. Yeah. Trust is not getting earned back.
Thank you. All right, next up we have Scott Gerard.
Hey, name is Scott Gerard. I am a member, uh, of the Liberty Lake community. I live here. I, I can't believe you guys would do that. I mean, that's just, that's pretty, that's pretty low. I, I just, that just blows my mind. That's indefensible. You four members, Cargill, Spencer, Kennedy and Van Orman, you're selected by us. The people, the citizens of Liberty Lake, do the city's business for us. You need to do what's in the best interest of the city. This is not the time or place for your personal beliefs, vendettas or agendas. This is business. When you dismiss someone as qualified as Kim because of your personal issues, you're not putting the city's best interests first. In the real world, we have a word for this. We call it incompetence. Healthy dialogue and disagreements are essential for us all to be more reflective citizens and leaders. You should not feel threatened for someone doing the job she was doing. And she was assigned to do, which was an advocate for the library. Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Lynn Atkins.
Lynn Atkins, resident of Liberty Lake. I'm having it really hard to take my mother's advice right now, which was take the high road. But I'm still going to try and do that. So what I heard here tonight, um, what I heard here tonight was some good dialogue that I had hoped to hear from councilmembers regarding their position as to why they would not approve Kim for another round on the, um, Board of Trustees. I was a little hopeful at first when that started, I have to admit. Call me a cockeyed optimist. But what happened was I saw no fact-based data for a reason not to reappoint her into that position. No fact-based data. What I heard from councilman Spencer was I heard about the whole fiasco, quite frankly, that took place between the Board of Trustees and the city council regarding who had power over what. I heard you reference that. Mistakes were made on both sides. There is no doubt about that. We probably could have all shared ourselves a lot of drama had there been some conversation that went. But by the way, that road goes both directions. You could have initiated that conversation as well with the library board of trustees. So trust has been broken, yes, between the library and the Board of Trustees. However, I don't see Kim as being the one who was responsible for that. I still saw nothing that indicated a reason why Kim should not be reappointed, other than the fact that she was a member of the Board of Trustees at the time that all of this nonsense took place. And if based on what happened here tonight is an indication, then I would have to suspect that every other member of the Board of Trustees who was in position at the time that all of this took place, you are going to vote to make sure that they don't continue. So here's what I am suggesting. I am suggesting that, that the trust that you have lost with the citizens of Liberty Lake is your responsibility and not the responsibility of the Board of Trustees. I still see no action from you that says that you are genuine about wanting transparency and wanting to build bridges and make things work. Guys, this is dysfunctional at its best. So I don't know if you need couples counseling or what, but you've made your decision and I thank you for hearing my opinion on it.
Thank you. Okay, do we have anybody else? Arlene, will you turn in a yellow thing before you leave? Just, you don't have to do it now before you leave.
I certainly will. So, um, this is not unusual at all. Controversy and libraries. I've managed seven cities. I've built three libraries. And the most controversy in every city, and I don't know why, because the library is a place of learning. The library is a place of community and it's just, it's the, it's the Achilles heel of a city. It just is. And I can tell you that from the west side to, to our east side. And this, all of you know, council members have a right to their vote, whether we like it or whether we don't. It's their vote. And, um, I, Kim, I don't know you. Where's Kim? I, I don't, I don't know Kim. But I've had me ten phone calls to my home about this issue. And I'm still trying to kind of figure it all out, but, but it, like, there was trouble somewhere along the way. And I think whether we like their decision or we don't like it, which a lot of you don't, we've got to move on. And, you know, the, the most important thing is that it is about the community and every, and I walked in that library this fall for the pumpkin party or something. And I was, I had tears in my eyes as I walked around that, because that's the first time I have seen that library since I came home. Because that was in the whole, uh, mix is I left in two thousand and seven. And from day one, I, I guarantee you, Steve Peterson threw a book on my desk and said, by Friday, R., I want you to get a library. I could have taken that book and chucked him in the back of the head because I had seventy-nine ordinances to get done in three months. And all he wanted was the library. And the book was, the name of the book, I kid you not, was Do It Right the First Time. It was. And if those of you who know Steve, Wendy, am I right? You know Steve. Those, those of you who know Steve, he did it. And, and back then, it was all about community and it still should be. A library is never going to be perfect, it just isn't. But we all have to set aside our differences and make it the best we can be because most communities would die to have a library. And you guys are on your third revision. My gosh, you're, you're, you're on a new construction path for a third library. Most communities would just like 10 books on a shelf. So congratulations to all of you for what you've done. And I think we'll all get past this and things will move on, we'll all move forward. And I wish all of us the best of luck. And Kim, I wish you the best of luck as well. So thank you for my comments. Thank you. And by the way, Wendy was part of this along too. She, she was all part of this as well. And the one thing, every board in this city is not autonomous. The only a board that's slightly autonomous is a civil service board. So just remember.
I need to stop you.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, do we have anybody online? I'm not seeing anything myself. Okay. All right, so with that, we will go ahead and adjourn into executive session. About how long, I don't know where chief went, about how long do we need?
Chief, 10 minutes?
Yes.
Okay, so, yeah, so let, let's, we, we're going to join into executive session. We'll come back at 9:45, no decisions. RCW 4230, 110, 1G Personnel Matters, thank you. All right, welcome, welcome back, everybody. We are reconvening in order to adjourn, it's 9:45. It's 9:45, we're done with executive session, no decisions. And there's no further business for the council, so we will go ahead and adjourn at 9:45. Have a great night.